You may want to announce at the beginning.
I will as soon as she has the. Is it because all the mics are on? Should we turn off mics that aren't?
It's this.
I know. She doesn't taste like that in the store, does it?
No, it does.
Um, do you have?
Yeah.
I have one vine. I got that, I got probably 15 or 20 jars out of one vine. When I was a kid, we had a grape barber longer than this.
You're being picked up on this plank to try to figure it out.
Oh, I didn't.
No, no, it's fine. It's fine. Just so you know.
Be quiet. They're on now.
She's muted.
Yes, you sound clear.
Yay.
Okay, well then I'm going to call the planning board of
Are you a technical, sorry?
Of the town of Wenham meeting for Thursday, May 9th to order. It's a little after seven o'clock and we're here at Wenham Town Hall. We're also on Zoom and on HW Cam. So as much access as we can offer, I think. It's also being recorded and I think you can find the recording on the town's website. Is that correct? I think that's true. Oh, they end up on HW Cam's website. Okay. Great. We have a number of items on our agenda tonight. Most of them are administrative. The first one, which was going to be Wenham Pines request for bond release for this is, has been tabled until June, to our June meeting, which will be June 13th at 7:00 PM. So the developer has asked for a continuance. So if you are on waiting for the discussion about Wenham Pines, you don't need to remain, although we're of course happy to have you. The next item on the agenda is MBTA Communities zoning exercise that we are engaged in. And there's a public forum on June 5th. And I don't know, Margaret, do you want to bring us up to date about where you are with the process of pulling that together?
Margaret, um, so we've been able to get the Bueker School that night.
Oh, Bueker.
Back and forth, um, yeah, about where we would be able to hold it. But we, we felt we needed maybe a larger venue and the ability to have HW Cam. So HW Cam will be there that night.
And when you say the Bueker School, you mean the multipurpose room, right?
We're still trying to decide whether it's going to be in the cafeteria or gymnasium.
Yeah, the multipurpose room is the cafeteria.
Yeah, that's the cafeteria. That's where we had the last one in November. That seemed to be big enough, but I'm not sure the audio video worked well.
Worked as well.
Yeah. So I'm going to work it out with HW Cam and people will know it's at the Bueker School. We'll have signs up when they get there.
And can you remind us about the time? So everyone who's on.
6:00 PM.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, we decided on 6:00 PM. That works for everybody. So we're starting a social media campaign to get the word out. Not quite sure what to expect, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what you expect for that forum and what you would like to see happen. This, the, the last one was more the small MBTA group that had formed. We did the presentation. I don't know how you want to handle it. Do you want the board?
Well, we have a preferred alternative now, right? So we should put it up in, and maybe some graphics, pictures of buildings that look like the ones that could be developed with that zoning.
Yep. So we'll create a presentation for, that, that has all of that information. And then who, who do you think will be doing the presenting that night?
I'm happy to do it.
I can do some. We can tag team.
Okay.
It depends on what it is. I wasn't at the first one because of my brother, so I don't know.
I think we need to have some of the same introductory material.
Yes.
Just to, to walk through it.
Yep. Okay. So we'll have the, the basic information about what MBTA community is, where we stand now. And we're trying to get input from the community so that we can move forward for fall town meeting is our goal.
I think a timeline would be helpful for people to see fall town meeting, our state deadlines.
Yep.
All of that kind of.
That's a good idea.
I think if possible, um, I think everyone said they can be there. I think the, I mean, we should be there as the board. Not, not in like an overly formalistic way, but like.
Not like this, but.
I think we need to be present.
Yep.
And, um, I think tag team's great. I, I think Dan, you, you're the point on this one, man. I mean, you've been running with this.
Well, you're the guy who's going to get all the questions.
I mean, I'm assuming we're going to be sitting like this, though.
Yeah, we'll have a table.
We'll have a table.
So we can each take a piece of this and present a piece of it and then as the questions come in, we'll pass them to you.
You'd be hiding in the audience, did you?
I mean, I was going to ask you some questions.
You can ask questions. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's sort of an open meeting about it and the opportunity to take some thoughts.
Yeah, we, um, I'll, I'll put some things together. You know, a presentation, kind of trying to, you know, determine what people might want to know that we, they don't already know. And do you guys see any?
I think people will come who didn't come the first time because it's real now. So I think there'll be a lot of people who don't know anything at all and we're going to have to start over.
But I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I mean, the basic stuff about these are our minimums. These are, this is what we have to do 1460 through 65, all that stuff.
Right.
So we.
I might take a picture of that development down in, in the Hamilton development, just this is what this looks like.
That's what an 18 unit development is like.
Yeah, this is what this looks like. Cause I think people hear it and they're very scared and then they see it and it's like, oh.
I, I did see a, a diagram in one of the documents you sent out to us recently, Margaret, that showed increasing density on like, almost like a timeline.
Yes.
But it was a picture. I thought that, if we could get the original of that, I thought that was great. And then we could just circle where we think we're going to be on that. So people can see like a single family, one acre, but then they can also see high density development, very high density development. To see where we are. Right.
Right. And in, and a photograph of something that actually has been developed.
Correct. In our area.
That density right downtown Hamilton, yeah.
I redid the fact sheet. I think I sent it to you. I don't know if anybody was there. I'm going to pop it up. I have it there. So I, you know, scanned, scaled it down a little bit. Just gave us some information about what, what it is and then, um, deadlines, basic information. And then the, the map with the areas.
Are we 24 acres or 24.8?
Where are you?
I think it's 24. 4.8 is the 20%.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a 20 acre district size. 4.8 is the acres within the half mile.
Right. Okay.
And then I did put all of the questions on the back.
Great. Awesome.
Great.
Yeah. And then they can go to Mass.
Is this going out before the event?
Oh, no. Do you, what do you think? Do you want me to get some printed and send it around and?
If I can get posted on our website too.
Posted online, yeah.
Yes, definitely.
And maybe Facebook? Do we still do a town Facebook?
Well, we have Facebook, we have Instagram and we have, it's not my realm, the social media. What's the other one?
No TikTok?
Facebook, TikTok.
LinkedIn?
That TikTok, we have TikTok.
LinkedIn? There's no LinkedIn.
We have Facebook, Instagram, and there's one other that I think they do.
X Twitter.
Can't be LinkedIn.
Oh, Twitter.
Twitter. And we'll post, we'll post the date and time on the electronic board out there. I think a week before at the very latest, or even, you know, once in a while we'll pop it up.
I have one more idea for marketing of the event. What about getting some of those lawn signs that you see everywhere, advertising everything that has really nothing to do with Wenham?
People will drive by and not actually read and just say, gosh, those lawn signs.
Some of us do that. But some of us read them too and say, why do you have that in front of your house? Is that, I guess, if we had like 10 or 12 of them, then we could put it at the busier intersections just where people are stopped, usually like right out here. And over at Four Corners.
Let me look into it.
See what legally we can do. Right.
It's already been on the display board, right?
Yeah, it was tonight.
Was it there already? Okay, cause we did tell Eric about it.
I've seen it for past week or so.
Okay. So we're already starting to get, generate a little bit of noise.
Great.
Okay.
Can, can you put the flyer up? Is there a flyer to, there was another document in our packet.
Oh, the flyer. Yes, yes, yes.
No, this is the fact sheet.
No, this is the fact sheet. Um, the flyer.
Open the flyer. I thought it was the fact sheet.
It might take me one minute to get there. Flyer. Um, I have to jump to another thing. Give me one second. Yes, Kate, Kate put together a flyer and she popped that up on, I think, Facebook already. Um, and then I'm going to grab that. Excuse me. One second.
Margaret, I just emailed it to you.
Kate, did you?
Thank you, Kate.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Let me get to my email. There it is. Awesome. Okay. Um, let me do a new share. Here it is. Drag it up here. Here we go.
Okay.
It's the flyer.
So the second paragraph on the, the first column, I'm, I'm not a big fan of how it's phrased right now.
Yeah.
Would this Wenham must adopt?
Discuss that a little bit. We were back and.
Is it that or the potentially risk losing?
I would, I would change that paragraph to say, to comply with the new Massachusetts law, Wenham must adopt local zoning by December 31, 2024.
Period.
And then lose all the rest of it.
Yeah, period.
Okay.
It's a little threatening.
Yep.
Okay. We don't want it to be threatening. Okay.
Dan, that, Margaret did mention that to me to change that. That was my fault. I, I didn't change it. I guess on this one I changed it on another version. So that was Margaret's fault. That was mine.
No, no, this is the first time we're giving you feedback on this. So.
Yeah. That's why we look at a draft and it's not a big deal.
All right. Thanks, guys.
But it's, um, I, I mean, it's potentially misleading because we don't actually get any of those grants, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
I got the English there, but if you don't know the situation, you, you would be confused. Right?
Sure. We can, we'll change that.
Okay.
Okay. Just making a note of it.
Yeah. So to comply with the new Massachusetts law, Wenham must adopt local zoning by December 31st, 2024.
And the next paragraph on the way down, just this line, my eye is on it. An opportunity to, to raise your questions and concerns assumes that everyone's going to be concerned. I don't know that everyone is, but I'm wondering if that's the, if we just say, opportunity for you to participate in the process and learn more.
Okay, participate in the process. Love that.
The negative twist on it.
Look, I don't mean to be contrarian, but to comply with the new mass, mass law, Wenham must adopt local zoning by December 31st, 2024. Fine.
Yep.
If it doesn't, it may potentially risk losing future grant opportunities. Like that's true.
I know, but do we want to say it on a flyer or do we want to say it in a presentation?
Why, I mean, look, we know how this is going to go down. I mean, people are going to say, why do we have to do this? So you're going to have to say that, right?
Well, it says it on the fact sheet though.
Yeah, we, we have that information other, in other places.
To me, the big threat is the litigation, not the loss of funds, right?
Cause we don't take.
Cause they don't take the funds. So I, I wouldn't bother. I, I think I'd leave all that out, like, like we said earlier.
I mean, it's a flyer, so.
Right.
Fair enough. It's a flyer.
Do we want to talk about the litigation update or developments?
Yes.
On the fact sheet?
No, 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 no. I just mean.
No.
I mean.
Oh, tonight.
Tonight. I don't mean on the.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Cause you sent that around, right?
Yes.
So there was a, there's a lawsuit about the Rockport action or the Rockport vote.
Yep.
Which was, you want to tell us what the Rockport?
Uh, I don't, I'm not.
In favor or did they turn it down?
I think Rockport adopted something and then the state turned it down or?
Adopted it, but residents of Rockport challenged that to the state. Yep. 10 Rockport residents challenged the.
No, they sued Rockport.
They sued Rockport.
Okay. So it is a suit.
There's a separate action a year prior where 10, where 10 people sued the state. And there have been a number of inter, potential intervenors, including residents of Wenham.
That's the part of the update.
And then the same group of 10 Rockport Tonians filed, just filed a lawsuit against Rockport and planning board.
Okay. I, I thought in one of those suits, there was something about a changed version. It doesn't really matter. For our purposes, there was a group of Wenham residents that attempted to intervene.
They're seeking to intervene in the state.
Was that thrown out this week?
I believe it was.
It was disallowed.
Oh, was it?
It was not, but it was.
Motion to intervene was thrown out?
Was denied.
Denied.
Really? Okay.
But it was, then I, I was told it was denied without prejudice.
So in other words, it was some procedural problem?
I think so. I think they didn't follow rule 9A with their filing, but.
Okay. Well, so that's just a.
The, I think the salient point for us was there was a group of Wenham residents who sought to intervene in opposition to the law. So as we discussed previously, I think we can expect rising opposition to this.
And we have not heard from that group yet officially, have we?
No, no.
No, have not.
But of course they're welcome to come to the forum and.
Or to any planning board meeting.
Any planning board, any, anything. Really? Yes. Um, okay. That's great. I didn't realize that the motion intervened had been.
Yeah.
That's, I, I heard that today.
Where did you hear that from? Was that in the news or something? Cause I hadn't.
Lawyers, we chat.
You lawyer.
I heard it from another lawyer.
I had to see it online somewhere. Not, I don't have any lawyer friends. So it was somewhere online to find it.
Yeah.
Is there anything more we need to say about the MBTA communities? Uh, forum.
I don't, I don't think so. So we'll.
We're not meeting again between now and then, right?
We're not. But I'll keep in touch with you. I'll get a draft of the presentation to you. And then you can look at it if there's more information that you want. But what I would really appreciate, if there are questions that you have in your own mind, that you feel the residents may throw at you, that you want more information on or, you know, that I can find answers.
I have one thing that I want to discuss a little bit is that the governor, current governor and the prior governor who created this idea is on record or saying, this is going to create affordable housing. And I'm like, well, 10%, can't be higher than 10%, can't be 55 plus. I get it, but when you start looking at construction costs today, land acquisition costs, septic costs, even with water costs, costs, I don't think they're going to be affordable by any stretch of the imagination in 18 per acre or whatever our required number is. So I'm getting concerned that we're going to get that feedback. That, well, these aren't going to be affordable units either. They're going to be a million plus. So I don't know if, if the whole law is flawed and should towns be speaking up particularly more affluent towns to think, well, they're not going to be affordable. So why are we doing this? To me, it's nothing but a developer grab, making it easier for them to build high density in a town that's not wanting high density. So I'm starting to get concerned about this whole merits of the case being affordable housing and affordable housing might just be a sham cover for what's really going to happen. Now, maybe in Milton, you can build affordable housing that dense. I don't know, but.
I'd like to know more about what those units in Hamilton are go for. Are they rental? Are they?
They're rental. Harbor light?
Yeah. Uh, no, in, in Hamilton. Yeah. I think those are rental. I'll find out more about those though.
But Rick, I think you're, I mean, it's not an affordable housing program.
No.
It's really, it's a density push is what it is.
Right. So I look at it the other way. I look at, if you create this more dense housing for people to give up their single family home. And then I don't see where you're going to reduce anywhere around here affordability. And affordability is a bigger, to me, is as big an issue as availability, right?
Maybe in our zoning, we need to ask for more than 10%, but we can't.
But we can't. Right. So that's, that's the thing.
Without an economic study that proves that you need that.
Cause we're already at 10%, so it's not going to fulfill our state requirements. So we don't have that to argue. That's my only concern coming out.
Yeah, I think things like that are bigger questions than this board could possibly answer. I mean, you'll know when a question comes up that it's not for us to answer, but.
Right.
But just to be aware of it, it might not be the panacea that the current governor is thinking it's going to be for more.
Right. And the law is not something we have the ability to change. We just have to do our best to.
As citizens, we do, but not as the planning board, correct?
Oh, correct. Of course.
As citizens, we all have that ability, but.
But I mean, in this mil, in this setting, what our job is, is to figure out a way of doing this.
Making it work.
Makes sense for the town.
Or not, one or the other.
Or either not do it.
Right.
But then we put the town in a position of paying legal fees. Right? Which I don't know how people feel about their tax dollars going to that.
Yeah. All right. So we'll get that out and, oh, you know, I'll communicate with you over the next week, couple of weeks to get things finalized.
And we'll shoot you questions as they come up.
Um, I did want to tell you, I sent the zoning bylaw to town council. Robin's looking at it now. She'll get back to us with her comments.
Overlay. Yeah.
Yeah, the draft overlay bylaw.
Great.
That we.
For MBTA.
Oh, for this, for MBTA.
MBTA, yes.
But we're not presenting that because it's still under review.
If it's, I believe we will be presenting that in June.
We can do that. Okay.
Yeah. We just, we'll be presenting it. It'll be a draft still because, you know, but you'll be wanting to decide shortly after that, what to present to town meeting.
Right. Cause of the timeline.
So that'll be distributed to this group beforehand, before that, a couple of days at least?
Oh, could you do it if it's a week?
No, no. As soon as Robin gets back to me, um, we'll get it to you right away.
It's also right after Memorial Day, so. So are we through with this part of our agenda?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, cause Spring Hill Farms is here waiting and there's two other things in front of them. I wonder if we want to move.
Can I make a suggestion?
You can.
Since the next thing is master plan.
Yes.
We didn't receive this until, I think, yesterday. I would suggest that we just table the master plan item and move on to Spring Hill.
I'd like to make a motion to table the master plan till our June 13th meeting.
June 13th. Okay.
Because none of us have read.
We haven't had a chance to review it.
And tonight you were, we were thinking of voting to adopt it, but if this board's not ready to do that, you might want to wait.
Has anything substantially changed?
Nothing major. They made a couple of small changes based on the last impact meeting, but no, nothing substantial at all.
Do we have a response to comments document for all those comments that came in at the last minute?
No, we don't have that yet.
So I'd like to see that, I think.
Were those just three? Those three comments?
Well, there were some other ones that came in at the end that were anonymous that.
Oh, beyond the three?
Beyond the three.
Oh, yeah. There were, I think there were three others that were rather kind of negative.
And it'd be nice if we had some sort of written reaction or response.
But we don't know who, who wrote them.
Doesn't matter. Town can just say memorandum, response to comments.
Where would you respond to it?
You know, writing on the, posted on the website next to the master plan, responding to comments. We received these comments. We took them into advisement. The plan has changed or not changed. And here's why. May I just think that was good practice?
Do you want to create that response, Ian?
I can, I can take a shot at it with you.
Look at the comments that came in. Ian, if you want to work with me and we can.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Are we, are we able to review things like that without, I don't want to get into open meeting issues, but are you able to circulate that to us?
The comments that we got?
Response to the comments.
Or Ian's response?
The response?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, just like anything else.
We just can't respond to everybody.
No, no, you can, I'll, I'll send you.
You can have it a week ahead of time before.
So you want to wait then on the master plan until the June meeting?
13th.
Okay.
I'm just curious, like, not that we shouldn't review, we should totally review before we adopt it. But if we have substantive changes, I mean, are we going to be able to do anything about it? It's done.
Well, it's, it's, it's sort of done. We can do whatever we want with it now. The consultants are done. I have the document.
Can we get into the PDF and change it? Okay. Okay. Good.
Yeah, we can get into the document and make changes.
Okay, cool.
Yep, if we want to.
Okay.
I'm more concerned about reviewing the action plan. That's really where I wanted to spend my time and I haven't yet.
Yeah.
Can we take these, Margaret?
You can take the black and white copies. Um, so I only, you can, you can take that.
Okay.
You can, you can fight between the four of you who gets the two copies that I printed. I'll try to print a couple more color copies. We just use the.
I can print one up in the office. It's okay.
Yes.
Is this online? I mean.
Yes.
You have it in your email too, I think.
Yeah.
The link in the email. That's what it is. Yeah.
Fine. I don't need that. I'll take this.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Having not deferred the master plan, but spoken about it, do we want to defer that? I would like to defer the update on progress of subdivision rules and regulations, at least until after we've heard Spring Hill Farms. Because they've been waiting. Would you like to, you have a presentation or?
Yeah. Um, thank you. Jeff Purgrin, Spring Hill Ventures LLC, Beverly, Mass. We just want to update you on our progress on the punch list from Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
Issues, which Dan will address that. And the other issue that came up was the affordable housing.
Yes.
And I would like to address that. Don Preston is here to.
Megan.
I don't know who wants to go first, myself or Don?
Well, I think you're standing in front of the mic, so why don't you finish what you want to tell us?
How we came about of donating the land to Habitat was, we were introduced to Don by the town via Margaret. And after discussing with Don how he was going to go about building the unit, we agreed to donate the land, plus we gave him some money towards some site work. We donated the land. It went to town council, Wenham Town Council, who reviewed a few documents, reviewed the deed. The deed came back, I believe, and it went to the planning board to be signed off. I have all the emails that Margaret has, that sent me back in 2019. And I believe the town knew that we were donating the land and Habitat was going to take it over. Our obligation. And I'll defer to Don and he can, he can state, I believe, what I just said.
Okay. Don, do you want to make a statement?
Sure. Um, yeah, we were at a planning board meeting where Spring Hill.
All right, Don, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Donald Preston, I reside at Three Pickett Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. At the time of this transaction, I was the exec.
Explain who you are too, so that everyone in the room and on Zoom knows who you are, cause we know who you are, but others may not.
Right. So in 2019, I was the executive director of North Shore Habitat. And I was who met with Jeff and Margaret in regards to this property at Spring Hill. Since that time, Essex County Habitat was formed and North Shore merged with Merrimack Valley Habitat. And Megan O'Neil, who was also with. And Megan O'Neill, who is also with, is now the executive director of the combined affiliates and where Essex County Habitat, I'm on the board still. The, so in 2019, when we met and discussed this, we proposed building a duplex. At the time, Jeff was, the developers were required to produce two affordable units. They decided to produce one of the units in a existing property at the front of Spring Hill. And we took on the other lot, and our plan was to build two units, a duplex, which would have given the town three units instead of just two units. The developer did give us, they donated the land. They also gave us some money to help when we were putting the roadway in, which would come off of Spring Hill. And they also offered to give us septic plans, which they had previously drawn up. We worked with the engineer, we received those plans, and we actually assumed at the time, my fault, that those plans have been already approved. So right now, we are currently in the process of getting the septic plans approved. So Habitat builds affordable units. And I know you were talking about affordability earlier. We serve families in the 40% to 60% range of area median income. And we are really the only developer doing that for homeownership. And so these units require quite a subsidy. Currently, they would sell, are in the 240, 250 range, maybe a little less. And the cost of development is considerably more than that. And that's just the construction costs of the exact house and not with everything else putting in the septic and all that. So we would be looking for some support on the second unit that we're developing, or the third unit of affordability. They've already contributed towards the development of this site. And we would be proceeding with the friendly 40B with the support of the town on this, as we did on Hall Street, same proposition. I think that covers it. If you have questions?
Margaret, do you?
Well, I think the question here that the board had originally grappled with was, in the original decision from the planning board for the subdivision, was the language about the affordable units and what was the responsibility of the developer. I don't know that we've ever gone through that language and decided that this board has decided whether they've fulfilled that obligation.
What is the language? Do you have?
Yep, I have it right here.
Okay.
Affordable units, let me just zoom in a little bit.
Two of the 19 permitted lots shall house two or preferably three affordable units.
Just, just want to clarify, this is the original decision. After this decision was granted, the project changed and went from 19 to 18 or 17? 17. So there were originally 19 lots permitted, but then after DEP went through the process, they had to reduce it down to 17 lots, so.
When that happened, did this clause get rewritten to reduce their commitment?
No, nothing got rewritten in the modified decision other than the stormwater and the number of lots. There wasn't a lot of changes. And the new decision reflected back to this decision said all other conditions of the original decision still stand.
Right, and it sounds like the plan is still for three units to come out of it, right, so.
So that's what this board is, that's the question. Do you feel that the two or preferably three affordable units are being done?
I misunderstood, maybe. I thought the developer said they had done an affordable unit.
Yep.
Already?
Yeah, there is one already, it's been accepted.
The little white house.
On the lot that we renovated and we sold that via lottery to affordable.
Yeah.
And that's on our SHI.
That's one, right? And then we're talking about a duplex, so that's two more, so that's three, so that's.
Yep, so I guess the question is.
Also, I'm missing something.
The question for me is, where's the funding for the construction coming? Right, so here, there were two, okay, I say that's the two units were, are being described as affordable. One's built, so I believe the developer is online to come up with the financing for the second unit and potentially the third unit, but I could see how they could, you know, modify that to be just two units, and the third unit could be fundraised, raised by Habitat. But when I was listening to the amount of money, it was for a septic system and for the lot and for the road to be built in. That doesn't include any construction costs. So I'm afraid what, my feeling is that's not fulfilling, in my estimation, the creation of two affordable units.
When we, the discussion that Don and I had, when we donated the land, he said they were going to be responsible for the construction, the cost. They were taking over it. That was the discussion Don and I had.
But this didn't get modified to reflect that conversation? So I'm still looking at this.
Yeah, the applicant has agreed to use reasonable efforts to build a duplex on Lot 18. Or whatever number it is now.
Yeah, yeah, it's Lot 17.
The lot is zoned for a single family home. So you'd have to go back to the ZDA. And Dan can probably answer better than I. He knows most of the neighbors up there. I don't think they would be.
They'll bring this.
Well, that is irrelevant to us.
Well, Habitat will bring this in under a 40B, and it would be considered a friendly 40B because Wenham doesn't have to entertain 40Bs if they don't want to. But Habitat has worked with Wenham before on another one on Hall Street.
Which looks like a single family home.
Which is beautiful, by the way.
That's the ZDA purview. That's not going to be the planning board purview.
Right.
Any funding for this project is also not the planning board purview. It's going to be Affordable Housing Trust or CPC or wherever Habitat decides to go for that funding.
Right.
But my concern with them going to that funding is, we're kind of paying for something that I think in this contract is covered. So I don't want Affordable Housing Trust to be spending half a quarter million dollars on this unit when that should have been absorbed by the developer as per this contract. That's what my root of my concern is. Because being, being on CPA, sorry, being on CPA, the first thing they're going to do is come to us for the money. And so I have to make sure that the money is being rightfully spent. So while I'm here on planning board, I want to make sure that the contract is clean and done. And then we can, then if we need more money, if Habitat needs more money, on top of that, then they'll feel free to come to CPA for that. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And Don will.
Could you do me a favor and use the mic just because we're on camera and?
Don and I were discussing this. He did say there's no money available from the town of Wenham for this project.
Right.
He, he knew about it, and he, and I'm not taking words out of Don's mouth. He said they would raise the money and build it.
So when you sign this agreement.
Your contract says you will build it.
When you sign this agreement and it said, "Further, the applicant has agreed to use reasonable efforts to build a duplex unit on Lot 18", what did you understand those words to mean?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that because I wasn't involved in the beginning. So I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Right.
Well, I mean.
None of us were either, so that's why we want to know.
So we turn to the language of it, and it says, "The applicant has agreed to use reasonable efforts not to give the land to."
But to build the duplex.
Them, but to build. I mean, the responsibility appears to be pretty clearly on the applicant to build the duplex.
And we were going to build it until Habitat got involved via the town. The town knew, I sent Margaret a email saying what we were doing. Town council reviewed the documents, and I believe I got it right here. Margaret, this is an email from you saying that it's going to go before the planning board to sign off on.
And what is the "it" that we're referring to?
Pardon me?
You said the, something was going to come before us, but I'm not quite sure what that was.
It was the deed, there was the Homeowners Association, LAU, LAU application.
That was for Dodge's Row unit, though.
No.
I don't, was it for this lot?
Yep, for this lot.
Because I don't, we don't have any.
Attach, hello, Margaret. Attach my edits to the developer of Lot 17. This is Sharon.
Yep.
Sharon from KP Law in Boston. So the town knew what we were doing.
But the town never approved it. This board is the only board that is, that has authorized to approve that type of change from what we agreed to there.
And this was not amended as part of that process?
There was no assumption that you didn't still have to build it. We understood you're transferring it to Habitat for Humanity, which is fine, and the lots, you know, it is, but it still has to be built.
And that Habitat is going to take over and build it?
Yeah.
Yes. They're going to deliver on it.
Do you have a contract with them?
But this requires you to contract and obligate them.
Yeah, although we don't have a contract, but they, they have the, they have the lot. Don, they're going to build it.
Well, if they've assumed your obligation.
Yep.
to build it.
There needs to be a paper.
Then once it is built, this condition will be satisfied.
Okay.
But it's not built.
I'm not going to argue with you. You're absolutely, it's not built, correct? I mean, but it is going to be built in the future. Don, what is the timeframe?
I'm going to defer to Megan O'Neill, the executive director, on that one. But I would say that we always assumed we were coming to the town for the second unit that we were going to build, for support.
For the second unit in the duplex?
Did the town know this?
Sorry.
I had made that here to Margaret. I wouldn't on the first.
No, I have to disagree with these comments because nothing was agreed upon with anybody. You all, you were all having your own conversations about this, and it's fine if Habitat wants to build on that property, but it doesn't necessarily remove this condition. The town, you know, we're not approving anything yet because we've had no application before us.
It sounds like, it also sounds like there's a possibility that only one unit would be built on this lot. Is that correct? Absence some other funding from somewhere?
No, our, our plan is to build a duplex, two three-bedroom units. And that's the question we're trying to resolve on the septic system. And it appears that the septic will support six bedrooms.
But you had said a moment ago that the second unit would have to depend on
Just bringing this up.
other funding from the town. And if that's not forthcoming, then you're building only one unit, not the duplex, correct? I'm trying to understand what's being said.
Would it, would it be okay if I?
It would be lovely, yes, if you can shed light on this.
Sure. My name is, can I, can I introduce myself?
Please.
My name is Megan O'Neill. I'm the executive director of Essex County Habitat for Humanity, the current entity. So we are in the, we started the permitting process this spring. We discovered that the septic had not been approved. Our intention is absolutely to build a duplex. As soon as we get the septic approved, we will begin the process for fundraising. And once we have the septic approval, we will know what the fundraising looks like, what our fundraising needs are, and begin working with the town on all of the approvals.
Sounds like a plan.
Yes, and we're looking forward to it. We had a great project on Hall Street. We're looking forward to having the same thing on Spring Hill.
Thank you. So what needs to be done further?
I still don't see how the units can finance.
Until it's built.
I mean, no, no, I mean, to me, I still look at this. I'm being very simple, is that okay? I'm just being very simple. We were offered three units, two, maybe three units. I get that, so let's just talk about two units. One was built, one was supposed to be built, it's not been built. The land was deeded to Habitat with some funding to do some rudimentary site prep work. But where's the rest of the money coming from? As I see it, the developer here has to build one other unit somewhere in Spring Hill. It could potentially be a duplex. I don't see the language that we all agreed upon, whoever, Habitat, developer, planning board, to absolve them from that one unit. So for me, it's still not just the land site prep work, but actually constructing the foundation and the building. Correct, and that's what I think is here. So I'm concerned that we haven't resolved that yet.
Which would help with the fundraising, it seems.
Correct, correct. And I would be much in a more position to support that through the town because I know we'll be asked if, I know the developer's doing their part, and we're adding the third unit in that development. Whereas that we did something beyond the minimum requirement.
I might, I might disagree slightly. Here's why. As I look at this language, and I wasn't a part of this board either, there's obligations about an end product. Some type of conversations have occurred with Habitat. That's not, respectfully, that's not in the town's purview. The obligation there to build the structures can be delegated however the applicant prefers to do. To me, the finish line is when that structure is built. And, you know, as long as it complies with that language and the town regulations and bylaws, it can drop out of the sky and land there. I mean, it's not for us to decide how the developer meets that, the applicant meets that end line. Now, I would say, I don't think the spirit of that was for the town to make a financial contribution. So to the, my brothers and sisters on other boards that hold purse strings for affordable housing, I don't think the town should be paying to build these lots, that I will say. But if, if the applicant and Habitat have made a deal to get over the finish line, and it's going to involve fundraising from whatever sources Habitat goes to, that's not really our concern.
We just need to see a built unit.
And when the unit is built and there's compliance with that, we're here to accept that application, to accept, to do what comes next.
Yeah.
Just so I can clarify, the conversation between Sharon Everett and myself regarded their, the deed restrictions that had to be placed on the Dodge's Row unit plus whatever other affordable units they created. And so we had town council make sure that the affordable deed rider was appropriate for whatever gets built there.
So was there ever board approval on the transfer of the property to Habitat?
No, and it was never anything that this.
Because it's not really in our purview.
Had to approve.
Well, I, I thought I heard a representation that the board approved that transaction.
No.
I didn't say.
Okay.
I said it was a, it was a planning board meeting according to an email I had. I never said it was approved by the board.
All right.
Yeah, and I kept the board updated on what I knew, but it, there was nothing.
It was the deed restriction that this is.
Yep.
So just to follow up on David's comment, if I'm hearing you right, we're not going to be in a position for street acceptance until the second unit is built.
I don't see how we could be.
Did I understand?
Yeah, I mean.
That's what you're saying.
Look, how many houses are up in that development right now that have been constructed? You know, 17, 19, 18? 16.
16, because you had an old one.
Those, those buildings got built. We're just missing a couple that haven't been built, or one specifically, a duplex. It just needs to get built. That's the bottom line, then it's, the development's done. That's the bottom line. Then it's, the development's done. So then, this isn't gonna be for a fall town meeting, then? I mean, it's not gonna be ready for fall. I know at our last meeting, we punted street acceptance to potentially a fall special town meeting.
Unless the building's.
Right, okay.
Hasn't been determined.
Is there anything else on this matter?
My name's Dan Olet. I'm with Spring Hill Ventures, the developer for Spring Hill Farm.
Thank you for introducing yourself.
You're welcome. Thanks for having us tonight. There were two other items of concern to the town of Wyndham when we came for a street acceptance. One of the items was a memo written by Weston and Sampson during their final inspection for their peer review.
I received those today, so I printed them out for you.
Yeah, what the memorandum from Weston and Sampson, if you have that in front of you, was actually sent to us from the town.
In February.
Back in February, yes. Thank you, Margaret. Among the, the small list included as-built plans, information about the storm water, water system, its operation and maintenance, and some drain manholes that had not been located. Those items have all been completed. They've been completed, and you have some of the documentation in front of you, which is information from Hayes Engineering, both in a letter written by the principal engineer, Peter Ogren, and if I could flip through here. The oper, the long-term operation and maintenance plan. Peter also included three of the as-built plans that Weston and Sampson was looking for. They had been included or submitted to the town when the basins in particular were built, but they were not resubmitted when Weston and Sampson did their most recent peer review. The other item of concern was sprinkler heads in the towns right of way, specifically in the, in the grass plots along the sidewalk. All of those sprinkler heads have now been removed, and the grass plots have been restored to their previous condition, so.
Great.
We can, what I'd like to do, I guess, is request that the town's peer review come back out just to verify those items. I think that's probably the correct procedure, but of course I defer to you folks on that.
Yep, we've run out of peer review funds, so we'll have to ask the applicant to replenish the funds.
Okay.
Peer review. I'll send you an email on that.
Of course.
So they can get out and review this document that I received today. Because they, the, the work they did used up all of the peer review funds that I had left. And I didn't want to go over and ask you for more if everything was gonna be done quickly, but we may have to get more so that they can go out again.
Sure, just, just let us know, any, Margaret.
I will.
We'll make sure that we replenish those funds so that the review can be done.
That sounds good.
I think the only other issue that I recall was just making sure all the easements are in place and recorded. So I, that may not necessarily be you. That may be a, I don't know, that may be a town council issue, that may be applicant council issue, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either. I'll look into it.
Okay.
There were easements that were changed and moved.
Yeah, there was an easement for the detention basin.
Detention basin, yeah.
On top of the cul-de-sac. That we have to get some documentation on.
Which was not a change made or initiated by the development team.
No, it wasn't the developer.
The current homeowner.
The homeowner, yeah.
DPW, so that was.
So that's why we're not sure whose issue it is.
Yeah.
I think the own, property owner has agreed to do the legality around that. They'll take care of.
We just need to make sure it's done, that's.
Yep.
Check that box. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is subdivision rules and regulations. It sounded like from your email that you were in pursuit of some funding.
I have some information for you about that.
Not funding through a program that would be affected if something happens to MBTA communities, though.
It's absolutely gonna be affected by that.
Yes.
The grant application, one of the main questions is whether you're in compliance with MBTA communities.
Well, isn't that interesting? I wondered about that.
And this is a rural community's grant, a small.
You said some.
I think it's rural, small-town.
Small and rural.
Yeah, small-town grant. But one of the challenges I'm having is finding a consultant who will do subdivision rules and regulations update. I've reached out to three or four companies now and gotten, one person said they would get back to me, two others said they don't do it. I'm actually asking Jen if she does it. I feel like this, it's, it's sort of a niche. It's a bit of a, a small item that.
There are a couple of lawyers who do it, I know.
And I'm just trying to get an estimate for how much it would cost, but I don't know. If, if, let me keep working on that. The grant application is due, I think, mid to late June. So I have time to get the grant application in, once I get an estimate, but I have to have some kind of an estimate to ask, to know what, how much to ask for.
So the MBTA compliance question, is it one of the grants that's listed?
Not one of the three, no. It's, it's any grant that's out there through the state, that's the first question they ask you now, is whether you're in compliance with MBTA communities and how you're in compliance with it.
Yes.
Will you roll back that footage again?
Huh?
Say, what, what did you just say again?
The grant application adds this language that says, are you in compliance?
So it's not one of the.
Not one of the.
Grants, but they're asking for everything now.
It anyway.
Pretty much all the grants that the state issues to municipalities will have this question on it. We are in compliance because we've sent them our plan.
Is this an executive agency?
This is.
I'm just.
It's the one-stop, so.
For shop for.
Yeah, the one-stop for grant.
Be an executive agency.
Anything that you submit is.
I'm just curious.
Be an executive agency.
If it's not, if it's not one of the grant programs in the statute, where is the authority coming from?
That's the, I think that is a legal question, Dan.
It certainly is.
They tell, I mean, he telegraphed that. She said she was gonna turn it over to everything.
And it's not.
Which I understand.
Since she has authority to do, we're not, you know, did the legislature give her the authority?
The three, those three categories, they kick you out immediately. This is just, we're taking it into consideration when we look at your grant application.
Hint, 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 nudge, nudge.
But when I fill this out, I am saying, yes, we are in compliance. We have not adopted the zoning, but we're anticipating.
We don't have to until.
Yeah, we don't have to until December. We'll know whether we get the grant before then.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be interesting to see how that plays out.
In, in all of your infinite spare time, and I, if I remember, I'll try and do it myself.
Yeah.
I gotta believe that some community in Massachusetts has recently updated their zoning bylaws. I mean, their subdivision rules and regs.
Oh, yeah.
I'd be curious to see.
Who did it?
Who did it? Maybe you've done that, kind of.
So we, we started this last, before 2020, it was 2019, we got the Climate Resiliency Grant to do all of our regulations, and we started that. It was a big project with Weston and Sampson. But then, and we got pretty close with the subdivision rules and regulations. But it kind of fell apart, and then we decided to do the master plan, so we put that on hold. I mean, we're pretty close. Town Council.
But the question, though, is, has somebody else done it, and who did they hire?
Yeah.
Or has somebody else done it recently, and can we just use them as a model?
Right.
I have several of them.
Is there a model online?
Council has given us their model. It's pretty legal. I think I, I can send that to you, but.
These things are.
You know, subdivision rules and regulations aren't gonna be a huge lift. You know, you guys probably could, could do it if you.
Aren't ours from like 1980?
Yes, they are. 1984.
Eighty-four, all right.
So what town council does for many communities is just gives them their boilerplate, you know, you know, you tuck in your own specifics. I don't know whether that's the best idea for Wyndham. We have a couple of other little challenges with our subdivision rules and regulations versus our zoning bylaws, so we wanna make sure it's all jives, but I will.
And who did the zoning bylaw for us? Who wrote that? It was a land use lawyer, right? I'm trying to remember.
Our zoning bylaw was Bobrowski.
Mark Bobrowski.
Mark Bobrowski. He did the zoning bylaws back in.
Yeah, but does he, and he doesn't do subdivision to match? It's like buying the coat and the pants together?
Check, I hadn't thought to go to a legal firm. Because he's, he's a lawyer.
Yeah, I know.
I was.
But he's also a planner.
I'll ask the question, are we up for taking one of these, or three of these examples and just doing the work ourselves?
No, we don't have time. Do not have time.
It was a quick no.
Involved in federal litigation. Two cases were filed yesterday and today. They're going to the Supreme Court? No, I don't have time.
I don't think you were on the board when we spent hours debating the definition of kennel.
Yeah, no.
That was. Well, that may be inevitable.
I'm gonna use my prerogative as chair and say, no, we are not doing that.
I will, I'll put together everything that we've got, because like I say, we are pretty close. And let me throw it out to, I'll, I'll check to see who's recently updated. I can put something out on the list or.
Bobrowski's probably retired now.
Kind of, I think.
Yeah, I should find, I'm hoping to find, I, I just thought to check with Jen, Jen Goldson. I don't know if they do them, but I'll, I'm asking her, and I've asked her tonight if she can let me know if anybody else.
Okay, that's great. And then the
Great.
Last item on the agenda is meeting minutes.
Yeah, and.
Which you looked at.
I did.
I love the fact that they go to you, you proof him, and then they come to us. It's like above and beyond the call of duty, Dan.
As long as I catch all the stuff.
Yeah.
It's okay. It's great.
Do you, let me see if I can bring that up.
Yeah, I have not had a chance to look at them because they came in. I'm guessing they're today.
They're pretty minor changes.
Little minor, but if you want to tell you about them, I don't know.
Can you, can you put them on the screen?
Yep. They were the three fourteen?
Four seventeen.
All right, hold on. Give me one more second. Oh, man, this technology, it's really getting to me tonight.
Do you want to mention our informational?
I will, but in other matters, this may not have been reasonably anticipated by the chair.
Okay. See if they'll swing over. Here they go.
They're in color.
And these are the.
Those are, that's not a red line.
That's not yours?
No, it is mine, but it's just she not seeing the red line, but. Just, yeah.
Additional highlights noted. Runoff is one word.
Yep.
My eyes go straight to those blue lines there.
Hold on, I'm just gonna make it bigger.
If you go to.
Show, show all markup.
All markup.
Does this have your changes? Catherine may have accepted.
I think she accepted them and.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Catherine, is that what happened?
Yeah, Margaret said to make the edits and send them to the board, so I did.
There you go, good.
Great.
You want me to send you the red line version again, Margaret?
No.
No.
These are pretty brief.
There weren't that many.
Right.
Yeah.
The only thing I see is runoff is one word, but.
Yep, that's been changed.
Yeah.
Let me move this, sorry, out of the way.
I think David Anderson got called out there.
David Anderson arrived at seven forty-eight PM.
He was on a video visit, medical visit.
Oh, gosh.
My father.
I hope he's okay.
Yeah, you can see them all.
Yeah, the board asked about the town of Hamilton and its MBTA communities. We didn't ask you that again tonight, but we probably should have.
You know who did it last night, as I read in The Cricket? I like reading The Cricket.
I.
What's The Cricket?
It's the Manchester paper. It's.
It is delightful.
It's a great little paper.
That's what I did want to tell you. I think we're getting a newspaper in town.
Oh, thank you, God.
Yes.
Similar to the Ipswich.
Excellent. Is it the same people?
It should be the Hamilton-Wyndham Howler.
Howler.
What about Wyndham first?
It used to be The Chronicle. Before you arrived, we had The Chronicle.
That's, I listened, so in The Cricket, which is Manchester and Essex, they said that Manchester last night had a MBTA forum.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, and the city didn't seem to be on fire, so it must have gone well.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes as they appear?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Weeks, says I.
I have to abstain, not here.
Pasquale, oh, I.
Anderson, I.
All right. Then the last item is other matters may as may not have reasonably been anticipated by the chair, and it wasn't reasonably anticipated by the chair, but we were asked to sit in with Pulte Homes and Gordon College at an hour-long meeting today to listen to them. They didn't present anything. They haven't really, my impression was they had not changed, remember they had that economic development report that gave a number for the benefit to the town of what they're proposing to do? And they got a lot of comments back from us, I think, and others saying there is going to be an impact on the school, you need to assess it. It still hadn't been updated, and they seemed surprised that Steve was pushing them to.
Pull this?
Yes, to, to, to offer a number there. I was in complete and total listening mode, not asking, I don't want to give them any view at all that, you know, said anything outside the process is appropriate. They want to use the independent overlay district. They don't have water yet. They're talking to a number of people, Beverly, Bruce Tar, maybe Bruce Tar's committee. I don't, I don't know.
Bruce Tar is intermediary to get to Beverly.
To get to Beverly, yeah. But they, it was not clear, really, what.
Right.
You know, so anyway, that's where things stand. They seem clearly intent on pursuing this. The Gordon College representative made very clear that this relationship that they have predated the current administrated, administration at Gordon. He said that a number of times. So the history with that is there was a president who wasn't partic, he was kind of a lightning rod, and a donor left because of this. That president is gone, a new administration is now in place, and their funding is much more secure now than it was previously.
What do you mean their funding? Gordon College?
Endowment. They, they were given a multi, I don't even know how many million dollars from a family whose name I can't even remember now. And that money was taken away and now is back. So in order to, the impetus to sell the property may not be as strong as it was when they started their relationship with Pulte. That was made clear in the meeting today. That having been said, they're still pursuing the development.
How come?
Because they are. I don't know.
I think the comment was their endowment was exponentially better than it was at some other point.
Because the founder might as well back.
The, it, it was stated repeatedly that they're in this partnership and they intend to move forward with it.
Right.
And they are also intending to, what's the word I'm looking for?
I don't know.
Take advantage of some of their real estate or put some of their real estate in, not necessarily just this parcel, but perhaps other.
They're thinking about opportunities that can benefit the community, is the way they put it.
Yes. Have they?
And they think of this as an economic development benefit to the community because it's taking money that's no, not on the tax rolls now and putting it on the tax rolls, basically. That's the wash.
Did they, are they aware of the colors that their land is in this map?
They did not, they mentioned wanting to be compliant with the master plan, but they did not go into that level of. They did not, they did not, they mentioned wanting to be compliant with the master plan, but they did not go into that level of detail. It was, it felt to me like it was more of an update and that they hadn't done a lot of work since we talked to them the last time, except to try to figure out how to get some water to the property.
How much can we say about this right now?
We don't have a project in front of us. There is no, there's no submittal, so we can't really deliberate on anything.
Well, so this is...
I think, yeah.
I'm just informing you about a meeting we had.
Okay, then let me, I'll just speak to this.
Can I add one, just let me just add one thing. The, the message was, there is still a lot of work to be done before this thing moves forward in terms of engineering and environmental and whatever conservation, and they haven't sunk those costs yet.
So, so, two years ago, this is my fifth year on the board, two years ago.
Really?
It is. It is. Time flies when you're having fun.
That's a good one.
Two years ago, we didn't have this. We have this now, not adopted, but we will adopt it in some format or another. And the thing about this town as a newer resident is that, and maybe this is true of all small towns or small towns in Massachusetts, is that we let sometimes developers lead us. But the thing about this is that we now have the sense of the community in writing of where we wanna go. And I'm not saying whether or not Pulte is in that direction, but I think at this point, it would be negligent not to put this in front of the Gordon group and say...
Oh, they're very aware of it.
That we are interested in development opportunities for your parcel. If you proceed with one type of development, how do you see that as sitting next to other potential developments? Could we have a conversation about this?
Right.
I encourage Steve to have a conversation with them that speaks to this, because we have this now. Like, it's not, no longer a question, like, oh, what are they gonna do, like...
Right, 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 right.
Being on the defensive. I mean, this should be...
We need to approve it before either one of us goes into a meeting like that and says, this is what...
Correct.
Right. So, that, that's fine.
I'm ready to put it up, but I understand.
I also would say, I personally feel very uncomfortable going in to a meeting like the one I had today and giving them any, when we don't have a, we don't have anything in front of us, to give them any kind of, like, if you do this, that will be okay, or if this happens, that will, I'm not doing that. It's basically, I went in in listening mode, wanna hear what they have to say.
And we didn't, we didn't do that today. We didn't, we didn't give them...
No. We didn't give them anything. We just listened. And they basically talked about the fact that they still don't have any water, so...
Were there any questions from the audience? I mean, were there lots of questions from the audience, so?
There was no audience.
Oh, it was just, oh, it was just you. It was a private meeting.
It was a meeting with, with, it was, well, it was public in the sense that it was in this room.
When you said public, I was like, oh, was there a room like this?
It wasn't a public, posted public meeting at all. It was the two of us, it was Margaret, it was Steve, it was a representative from Gordon, Kate Mallory was there.
And that's your training, so that's great. It's, yeah.
So it was a town meeting. Yeah, no, and it's, it's fine.
That's odd, though. Why would they do that?
Well, I think they wanted us to, to, they wanted us to, to, to give them something, and I, we didn't...
Why wouldn't they call a meeting?
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's that. I mean, I think they're trying to engage and provide information, and...
And find out what we want.
Much like Pulte came before this group. Well, but it was a good...
Right, which is appropriate, which is appropriate.
Much like Pulte came. Correct. Yes. It was, it was an opportunity for us to gather information, too.
Exactly, which we're just giving to you.
To learn where they are and what they're thinking. So I thought it was useful, productive. I think we learned some things today.
But it was not, it was a meeting with Pulte. It wasn't a meeting with Gordon about, okay, here's your property and here's how it appears on the map. It was not that at all. And it was really, I felt, well, I don't know, Margaret, you can probably say better, I think the request came from Pulte.
It did.
Not from Gordon.
So, in, in the past couple of weeks, there have been some meetings happening regarding the water. Senator Tar has spoken to Steve a little bit about what his thoughts are about water and the, the issues that we're seeing with the governor wanting new housing developed, but water being an issue, especially here where Salem, Beverly is denying them access to water. I think Pulte feels like they've made a, a little push towards getting closer to getting water somehow, and I think they wanted just to tell you that and, and tell us a little bit about that. Yeah, that, it wasn't anything earth-shattering, just that they wanna, I think they want us to know they're still, they're still alive.
They wanna build a relationship. They're looking to build a relationship. I get it.
They're still out there, they're still pursuing this.
Right.
They, they started, they did do an economic feasibility study of the project. They think they said...
Which is the same one they...
It was the same as they had said before, a couple million dollars a year. But that study was given as a draft to Steve, and it did not include any impacts on schools. And Steve pushed back and said, you know, 55 and over does not mean that they're not gonna have children, if they're one- and two-bedroom apartments. Pulte has said that they, in their, all of the other developments that they have like this, there's very few children.
And they don't want, they actually don't want...
But the independent overlay allows you 20%, right, so, not children, but...
Yeah, the, the independent living overlay really only requires 80% of the units to be age-restricted, 20% of them don't have to be. But Pulte has said if they do forward this development, it would be all age-restricted to 55 and over. Yeah, I mean, I think that they just wanna keep the conversation alive. They're not ready to submit an application, because until they get water, they're not gonna spend the money on the engineering.
They weren't very clear about that.
For their, you know, septic or construction designs or streets and things, so they just want us to know. And I think they're kind of looking for the town to not support the project, but just be aware of the conversations being had with Senator Tar and the Salem, Beverly, or Ipswich River, all those entities about water.
And they did mention that they're trying to get sewer through Beverly if they can.
As well.
If they can't, they would be able to put a wastewater treatment plant somewhere, is what the representation.
Be a lot more clearing and land disturbance.
You can check out The Cricket. There's a lovely letter to the editor from a resident of Manchester who notes that Gordon College, located in Hamilton...
Hamilton, interesting.
Is thinking about selling its land to a residential parcel, which will abut Manchester's water source, and that the town of Manchester needs to start getting very interested in this project.
That's actually something that they've talked about. They are talking to Manchester, they're going to talk to Manchester, too. 'Cause the Ipswich River watershed...
The Cricket is where it's at.
And the other, yeah, ends right on this property, so if they go on the other side of it, they're in a different watershed.
Gordon's property is full of little ponds, I think, some of which are part of the Manchester water supply.
Yeah, there was a mention that they have been appro, has Gordon been approached by Manchester for the MBTA communities?
Yes.
Yep.
And then there was another mention that Hamilton may have...
How does that work? Well, there's some of Gordon's in...
That's the land in Manchester.
Yeah. In Lanches, in Manchester.
Gordon's land is in Manchester, and using that as their MBTA overlay.
That Hamilton has, this is according to what was said today, Hamilton may have approached Beverly, Salem about water infrastructure, which would somehow require it to go through Wyndham in someplace, so...
This is all hearsay. We have no documentation. It just was mentioned at the meeting.
Until we weed Salem and Beverly off the Ipswich River, this is a problem. But once, once they get on MWA water, which I think is part of their process going on, then we'll be fine.
Right, well, and that's, that's...
Then we can reverse the flow in Wyndham Lake, so it outflows, not inflows. There's a lot of things we can do.
Right, but Ipswich feeds Beverly, so it doesn't really solve the larger problem, which is the Ipswich River watershed is overburdened, so... And that might be why Beverly doesn't wanna give water away, 'cause they legally can't.
Yeah, maybe. Hamilton's dealing now with the Chewbacca Woods project? That is now a 40B, and I got a notice today that they had a hearing on May 2nd, so they increased those units to 57, I think, where they were only fewer when they went to the town, and they...
Part of that is, their, their affordable housing index is much lower, much lower.
They're below 10?
They're below.
Oh, yeah, like, like six or seven.
Yeah, even with all the projects that it's gotten through.
I think, look, I, I'm not, I, I think it's great that the, the meeting was entertained and that where there's a flow of information. I think I was conflating two issues, which is, it feels like we're in a very defensive or reactionary posture on one of the five parcels that's been identified as opportunities for strategic redevelopment or reuse or use in this town, and arguably the most developable of all of them. And so, I think we now have something that is an opportunity to have a conversation with that landowner, and so I don't know what it's gonna take. Somebody needs to be identified as the person that can open up that conversation with Gordon and make sure that they're abundantly aware that we want to work with them if they are looking to sell, redevelop their land. We wanna be a part of that conversation and not just be invited to off-the-record meetings with a certain type of developer. That seems like it's not really in the town's best interest.
Well, and that's an outreach to Gordon, not through the developer.
So how do we do that?
We can, we can do that.
I wanna say one more thing in addition. I think that some of the property that they own is definitely developable. Some of it might not be.
There's a lot of wet lands.
A lot of wet stuff, a lot of, a lot of cliff, a lot of, you know, on the other hand, the part of the campus that's already been developed is obviously quite developable, right? And there's more land that they own that is, but I don't think we should assume that everything they own is developable.
And the people across the town line in Hamilton are very well organized, and they know with the Chewbacca Woods project, where everything is on that side of their, of the town line, so they're very well organized to be, you know, part of the conversation as well.
Yeah.
It, it may be that none of it's developable, but they believe some of it is, and so I just think we need to start the conversation, so I don't know how we do that.
If I could suggest...
I think we call Steve, and we say, "Steve, we got this plan now." Yeah, and I know Steve has conversations with Gordon College, you know, on not a regular basis, but often they'll talk about issues over there. But once this master plan's adopted, I don't see why the planning board could not invite them, their stakeholders, in for a conversation and let them know our master plan is here, and, you know, here's what we'd like to talk to you about. I don't see why the pla, planning board couldn't do it with the town administrators.
We'd have to have, if the planning board did it, we'd have to post it as a public meeting.
Yeah, but that's, that's okay. I mean, you, just like this, you could have them in here for a conversation. But we could talk to Steve, too, and that way you all get to tell them about your master plan, you know, and where Gordon fits.
Well, after our June meeting, when we prove it, we can do that. Can I suggest that I would like to see the last five minutes of the Celtics?
Is there somebody here that has an item to bring up? Oh, just hang on, okay.
So, I'm, make them... Can I make a motion?
You can, please.
We adjourn until June 13th at, well, sorry, June 13th at 7:00.
June 5th.
At 7:00, but June 5th at 6:00 for the MBTA forum.
Okay, great, and I'll keep you guys, oh, sorry.
I'll second that motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.